Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 12, 2019, meeting of the Quincy City Council. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor DeBonner.
President.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Hughes. Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCarthy.
President.
Counselor Palmucci. President Kroll.
President.
Six members.
Six members. We have a quorum. At this point, councilors, would you please mind joining me in a, or stand and join me in a moment of silence, keeping in our thoughts and prayers, those brave men and women who If you would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you would, please read into the record the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. And with that, the first item on the agenda, please.
Number one is a presentation of a new public safety headquarters, Phase Two. Mr. Mayor.
Joined here by the mayor of the city of Quincy, Mayor Koch, and also want to thank all the men and women who are here with Quincy Police Department. Thank you for joining us. With that, Mayor Koch, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. It's good to be here. I get down here a couple of times a year, I guess, and I hope my presence tonight reinforces the importance of what we believe this project is for the men and women who serve our city, both in the police and fire departments. You may recall last March, some money was appropriated to start a conceptual study in design to replace our police station and include services for the fire department and emergency management. And we're actually at that next stage. So retained a peer review architect. The architect Castle Booze was hiatus, as you know, some months ago to do the concepts. Worked very closely with both the police and fire departments on the programming side and the inside. I wasn't quite there on the look of the outside of the building. We brought in a peer review, and we have a little bit of a different look. We've begun to look at land values, negotiations for acquisitions that'll be needed, as well as relocations. We've been working with Father Bills, and I know John Ezwinski's here with us tonight on a relocation within that Broad Street area. And we started discussions with a number of agencies that will be involved in what we're looking to do. And of course, there'll be a rigorous environmental review necessary as well. Just to reiterate the next slide, the police headquarters was built in 1925. Prior to that, there was a police station on School Street. Prior to that, it was the basement of this building. As you know, the old jail cellists are with us downstairs. It was renovated in the 1980s, and I don't think the architect got any awards for that renovation, for sure, certain. But we've had significant problems with that building ever since. We continue to deal with HVA systems, masonry, roof leaks, you name it. It's been nothing but a challenge, a lot of money over the years, putting Band-Aids on what was to be a building that should have lasted a whole lot longer. Next slide, the fire headquarters, that was built in 1936, and that houses the admin as well as a regular working station. As you know, with the change in traffic parking and lighting department, we are working for a longer-term solution to house them in a different location. We were looking at putting the central firehouse with the police station right at C Street, but after doing some analysis on response times and the negative impact that would have had in certain sections, we backed off on both of them at the same location. So we're looking to do complete police headquarters, fire administration with fire prevention, as well as emergency management in a new building on the site on C Street. The next slide shows kind of a building shown before, and if you look closely at that left-hand piece, was the piece that was going to be added on once the old station come down, and we were going to house inspectional services, public health, and veterans. We backed off of that. We just felt we were trying to do too much with one place, with one building. It created a set of problems and challenges, so we pulled that out of the mix, and we'll deal with those agencies at a future date. So we really zeroed in on police, fire, and emergency management needs. The next slide shows kind of a, that red outline would be roughly the building imprint, footprint on the site, as you see. That would be obviously the Mount Wilson Cemetery up above, C Street, and then to the left, Southern Artery, and the bottom would be Broad Street. The next slide shows, again, kind of an aerial of the site with the new acquisition of land around it, a building that would adequately deal with the needs of our police department, our fire administration, emergency management. It would also, it would include a place for the men and women to get their firearms certifications within the building downstairs with a shooting range area. It will include really all the necessary standards up to code, if you will, of the needs of a department of today and all they deal with. So you can see in the back portion, we've got a parking deck. There'll be two layers of parking, plus the parking to the left. I'll go over in a little bit, but if you look to the left here, there's no longer a gas station. That is one of the identified acquisition parcels to create this. Now, you'll also see that there's a lot of green space on that corner and the area between the building and C Street. We believe it'll be a wonderful complement, really, to the cemetery. As it stands now at the Brian Post with all the asphalt macadam, and with that ugly police station we have today, it's not a very handsome, pretty corner at all. Certainly doesn't speak to this city's history or prominence as a city in the Commonwealth. And I think the result of this project will do exactly that. Go on the next page. This shows an iteration of what the building would look like. You can see that's more of a Quincy, New England, traditional look with brick and granite, copper and slate. And really, we're building a building for 100 years. I'm certainly not going to use a lot of examples, but I think it's been this administration's goal, when we do something, we do it right, we do it well, we do it so it's going to be around for a long time. This is really for about, all about the future generations of the people living here, being served by the people that work in this building, but also to provide the necessary resources, needs, and standards that the men and women behind me deserve. So we think this is a very handsome building that this city deserves. Next slide, just mention that, as you know, the Quincy Shore Drive and C Street is under reconstruction. That's a Mastart program we had been working on for a couple of years, but we're working with Mastart for that entire corridor and also Southern Artery between C Street down to McGrath Highway. There are some challenges, as we know, and I think with the improvements in this plan, which will also include roadway improvements, I think it's going to solve a number of the traffic issues and challenges that we have in that corridor area. Next slide, another iteration. This one I want to mention that we would create on that front and that whole corner, really a park dedicated to our first responders. There is an existing statue to each of both the police and the fire departments in Mount Wilson Cemetery. We'd be looking really for dedicated park space to the police and fire first responders of our city. As you all know, they put it on the line each and every day for us, and I think that we've seen some things gone nationally that thankfully don't reflect what the people of Quincy feel about their departments. But I think this is a nice addition, if you will, to the complex we're preparing to express our gratitude as a community for all they have done and continue to do for us as a city. So that would be part of the program. That design is very early on. I've had preliminary meetings with mutual aid of the police side and 792, local members on the fireside, and everyone's at the table. We're looking forward to coming up with a complete design plan for that that everybody will be happy with. This next slide really shows the pieces of lands that we're looking at for acquisitions. As you all know, this campus has an effect on the animal shelter, and as you know, we're working on an animal shelter on Quarry Street. It also requires the real estate that Father Bills is currently in. Some of you may know that was the registry building initially, built by the city, rented out to the Registry of Motor Vehicles. That's where I got my license. Some of you may remember that. And then, of course, as time went on, it became the location for Father Bills. So if you look at that, 29 Broad Street is the old Broad Street VFW facility that, as you know, was sold a few years back. To the left of that, at 450 Southern Artery, is the gas station, which is a Stop &amp; Shop gas station, but they lease, it's not owned by Stop &amp; Shop. In the two parcels below, 12 Field Street and 39 Broad Street, they would be, the areas would be zaring in to relocate Father Bills at this location. Additionally, would be providing a road network access, one way from Broad Street to go up to Field Street. Some of you may or may not know, when you're coming down Field Street, you come into the intersection with McGrath Highway, and there's a full set of lights there. So we believe with reorienting some of our own city traffic and department traffic that we can make things a lot easier. We'd be looking also at an island on the Southern Artery so there'd be no more left-turn ins, left-turn out to Broad Street. Again, that's a lot to work on still with Mastart and our own traffic engineer, but that's kind of the direction we're headed. You know, I take remarks from time to time from people about whether we should have Father Bills in the city. And, you know, I think of the great line by John F. Kennedy in his famous inauguration speech where the enemy said, "May God's work truly be our own." And I think in government, we have responsibility to help those that fall on the margins, that need a safety net, that need some assistance to get back on their feet. So we're fully committed to working with Father Bills to relocate them on the other side of Broad Street. And I know that at some point during perhaps some of the committee discussion, when we get into the weeds a little bit more, I'm sure Mr. Ezwinski will share a little bit about the new concept that would be included in this with some apartments as well as day programs, so they're not necessarily throwing anybody out in the morning, but people would have resources there in the new facility to assist them in their challenges and needs. So we look forward to working those items out with Father Bills going forward. The fire piece, back to that for a minute. As you may know, on Quincy Avenue, there's a site at 47 Quincy Avenue that is owned by National Grid. It's been up for sale now for a couple of months. We've had some developers reaching out to see what kind of appetite would it be for various type of housing there. I believe, just as I believed with the St. Mary's site, that we need to tie that site up, that, you know, Will Rogers, I think, was one that said, "Buy land because they ain't making any more of it." We are a built-out city. We do need to look at replacing our main firehouse, essential fire headquarters, at some point, and that would be a perfect location to do that. So in this package is the money to acquire that parcel as well, and then we begin looking at a long-term plan. You know, the fire headquarters is a handsome old building, but as time goes on, the wear and tear, plus the weight of the apparatus into these old structures, it's very difficult to accommodate them. So you can see what would be a very early iteration concept, and generally speaking, with new firehouses, they have doors on both ends so that they pull out and pull back in. They're not jumping off the truck in traffic trying to back into the station. So that's the direction we'll be heading down the road. That's why we kind of made the decision to bifurcate the project a little bit from what we initially discussed. So look forward to working that out as well. And then, of course, the total package for this next phase, which is what we call Phase Two. You can see the lines here, and the dollar doesn't go as far as it used to, I can tell you that. But the land acquisitions relocation, the architectural fee, which will bring it up to construction documents for bidding, the environmental piece to it, owner's project manager, the agency coordination permitting and infrastructure work, and then, of course, the site demolition and site clearing would bring us to this dollar amount of $32 million. That is what we're placing before you tonight, which I would expect to go in the finance committee and then would have some subsequent meetings. And then we would certainly be back to this body. We can go to the next slide. It gives you a little bit of a current timetable of what we're looking at, timeline. We'll continue some public meetings. We'll work through the land acquisitions, again, the schematic design, continue to look at value engineering, and certainly, as we do with everything, we've been very successful, as you know, with the school building authority. We'll be looking at for grants to assist us going forward, perhaps some, maybe some federal money will free up. They've been talking about infrastructure monies for the last several years, but, so we'll be at the table looking for any and all possible help with this, both at the federal and state level. Spring of 2020 is when we really start the work, summer, and then we'll be back to this body once we get this project completely bid and get a full understanding of the actual dollar amount we'll be looking at. You can see we're looking at, if all goes well, if this body agrees with our request and things go well, we're looking at a spring of 2023 for completion of the project with that being everything done, with the old police station coming down and the park being constructed as well. So it's, I think it's well laid out. Look forward to providing any and all information necessary. Our departments, project managers, architects will be available to the council, and look forward to seeing this through. Again, I want to thank the men and women of the police and fire departments. We've got more than 200 sworn personnel in both the police and the fire department. We've got about 68 civilian employees on the fireside and about four civilian employees on the fireside, and they work extremely hard, they work very well together, and I think bringing the admin and the management teams of both departments to get under one roof will only create more efficiencies going forward for the city. So with that, Mr. President, I wrap up my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions at this point, understanding that in committee is when you probably get into the weeds.
Yep, absolutely. Does anybody have any preliminary questions for the mayor before we go to committee for a full deliberation? No? Yeah, Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this before us. I realize this is a very important and timely project that needs to be addressed. It's been a while. I don't know if the renovations that were done in 1980 were really renovations, but they, a lot of money that was spent then, and I don't think it did much for the police department, from what I understand. So if you could, we talked about the original plan, and I know that we've, you said you changed it. Could you tell me what's been taken out of the original plan, just so I, just to regroup myself, because I-
Joe, if you want to go back to that slide, the original concept, we showed a building that was really built in two phases.
Yep.
Go back a little bit more, Joe. So there you go. So you can see that yellow building, you can see a dotted line to the left part of that building. So to the right of that dotted line was going to be the police and fireside. To the left was going to be public inspectional services, public health, and veteran services into that piece. We felt it was a little too aggressive trying to jam in all of this in one site with the parking needed, as well as the resources necessary and the space needed by both the police-fire as well as emergency management. So we decided to make that change. Originally, when I first talked about this publicly, we talked about, as I said earlier, perhaps locating the incomplete operation of central fire headquarters down at this location, but we would have lost two to two and a half minutes of response time to the south part of our city, so we weren't going down that road. So we kind of valued engineering this piece off, consolidated really into truly public safety, and that's where we're at.
And where do those, where do those other departments that you were going to bring into that site, where do they currently exist? Are they going to stay in their current location?
They'll stay where they are right now. Public health is at the Kennedy Center, inspectional service is at 55 C Street with Public Works, and veteran services is at the old Spanish War Barracks post down on High School Avenue.
So the plan is to keep them where they're located now. And then when you go into slide number nine, which is the new renovations of that, it's going to be, so when we talk about, it's going to be the management, you say it's the police, the full police headquarters and the fire department management, is that correct?
Yeah, so admin of the fire department, so the police, obviously the police and the entire department will be there, the fireside, the fire chief, the deputy fire chief, fire prevention, and their admin, the fiscal folks and administration will be there, and then the emergency manager will be moved here from one Marymount Parkway that'd be included in here as well. The beauty of that is it'd be some, obviously some shared efficiencies with training rooms and classroom space that, they're not used 24 hours a day, but both departments do a lot of training and be able to do that under one roof, shared, with some shared spaces, I think is going to be a good thing overall. So that's about where we're at, counsel.
Okay. And the fire chief, and just out of curiosity, are there other sites and other locations that don't have a fire chief within the head, like with a fire truck or just general question for that, it's administration only?
I'm sorry, Ms. Power-
So you're going to be putting the management of the fire department with the police, but they won't have access to, they won't be, they'll be going out in special, they won't be going out in the fire trucks. If there's a big fire in Quincy, they'll be deployed separately?
Yeah, that's correct. There'll be no apparatus located here. The apparatus would go from the various aid stations from the city. Chief and deputy chief would respond as necessary from this location. Traditionally, the deputy that runs suppression, there's four deputies, four groups, they're on the road all the time anyway, out at the station. So it's really the chief, the administrative deputy, probably training, as well as fire prevention that'll be located here.
And how many more people would that put into the combined building for the police and the fire, with the administration just being put in there?
That's a good question. Probably in the vicinity of a dozen.
And then on the next slide, which is the revised building concept, and I realize you're pricing this out and you're going to do the efficiencies, is there any conversations for, you know, solar panels or anything on the roof, the way the roofs are built, or?
We'll be having those discussions with Shelley Dean and the Public Builders Department, Commissioner Hines, as we get into the process. We'll be looking at all the environmental efficiencies and the lead status, et cetera, so, yes.
Okay. And then currently on page 12, when you have the actual layout with the park, are they still, are the police, would the police still be exiting out onto, from Broad Street onto the main road, or, it's hard to tell where the exits are for the, and how they enter into the police station.
Well, the public, the public would come in from C Street, as can the police and fire personnel. We're still working out the parking arrangements. The public would access from the C Street side, the employees would access from the Broad Street side, right off the parking deck, and the lower deck and the upper deck for both departments.
Okay. And currently, when the police leave, if there's an emergency and they're leaving, do they leave off of Broad Street, or do they, which way would they exit to?
Well-
If they're, if they're at the headquarters.
The cruisers are on the road all the time.
I understand that, but I'm saying if they-
They're responding from wherever they are, so.
If they were at the police station and had to leave-
Either side, I guess, depending where they had it, either side.
I didn't know if there was an emergent, like a side that they would leave from. And then, when we get to the financing part of it, and you have land acquisition, and you also have the police, I mean, the acquisition for the fire station, when we go into finance with this, it would be very helpful if we could break out the land acquisitions and the cost for architecture. Is it strictly just for the police station, or, because you have land acquisition for the fire?
The only thing in there related to the fire station would be the land acquisition. There is no money in there at this point for architectural, you know, that's something we'll look at probably amongst down the road.
Okay. And then you mentioned Father Bills. Is Father Bills going to be, are we going to be building that out? Who's responsible for building up Father Bills in the new location?
Well, Father Bills is responsible for that, but I'm sure they're going to be getting assistance from state and federal sources, and we'll be working with them on that to help them secure those.
Okay. So if there's any place that we can break out this, the financials here, it would be very helpful for us to be able to review that. That's just my request for when we go into finance, but thank you very much. And then, obviously, when we go into finance, there's going to be questions as we build out the plan as far as energy efficiencies and how we can make this 100-year building last 100 years and be efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
They're excited about it.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. And again, I would suggest to all the members of the council, it's been my experience in projects past that, you know, Mayor, you keep an open door, so let the dialogue continue between the presentation and obviously the finance committee meeting, you know, with any subsequent questions. I also want to, well, before I say that, Counsel DeBonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor Koch, for coming in for your presentation. I want to thank Quincy Fire and Police for coming in tonight. Just two questions real quick. The federal side, the federal funding, is it going to make a difference who the president is for, if we're going to get more funding here in Quincy, Massachusetts?
I'm not going to get into that one, counsel. There are, there are programs that will, in some cases, we work with, it's probably the regional homeland security mighties come through, that we've been successful in acquiring equipment and so forth. So there are sources that currently exist. I've had conversations with Congressman Lynch about, you know, what is going on for infrastructure packages that's going to help cities and towns across the country, and I'm still hopeful, everyone seems to be obsessed with impeachment down there, that we're going to get some of these things done as well. So we'll see what happens there, but we're going to be shaking every tree possible to assist us with this.
Sure, sure. Obviously, we're in a state election coming up here, I mean, a countrywide election. So the second question, and a little bit on, Mr. Mahoney said, the Father Bills, I've been fielding a lot of questions out there about, and I see a couple of administration staff here tonight. You talked a little bit about it, releasing, having them released to the street where we could, and maybe you can elaborate a little bit more, would you have something that was a 24/7 facility inside where if they needed the services, that they could have it in, inside the facility?
Yes, and I'm sure when we get to the committee process, they can get into the detail, but it's a whole new concept. It's not what we think of the old days. So there'd be, it'd continue to be what would be a triage area for those that are up against it, but we're looking at more permanent apartments for transitional housing as well. In addition, they'd have all kinds of resources in there during the day, they'd have access to computers, to build resumes, to look for jobs, library services, and certainly food to feed, obviously lunch, dinner, and breakfast plans as well. So that stuff, I'm sure John and his team will get into when we get to the committee level, if you have any more of those questions.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to ask you, just because I've been fielding a ton of questions out there, and you know, just, just the added, the added services that the police and fire have to do with the Narcan situation, that we've been basically the trendsetters to do, and it puts a little bit more stress on our men and women on the street, and I see that, being out early in the morning at 7:30, I see them all released to the street, and then they really have no place to go, and I think it would be to all of our best interests that if we could have something in-house that we could work with them.
That's the plan, counsel. Maybe I'm not communicating well, but that is the plan.
Okay.
Let me also add, though, that, because I know it gets frustrating for Father Bills, but, you know, the homeless population issue is challenging, and there's all kinds of root causes, mental illness and other, but all those homeless people you see around town necessarily have anything to do with Father Bills. You know, our police department works with the highway and park department, we're constantly cleaning out areas of lean-to's and tents built for people to sleep in in certain parks and all, and we don't accept that. We have, we have a shelter here, people can avail themselves to that shelter and kind of follow the rules. So, you know, sometimes it's unfair, they get kind of labeled with, every problem that's out there, the homeless, is somehow generated by Father Bills. Father Bills is kind of a response by this community, and it goes back a long, lot of years. Father Bill McCarthy, Pastor Wismar, and so many others got together to get people in out of the cold. That's how it started a number of years ago. So, you know, we're an urban area, and we're going to continue to have this challenge, and I think it's, I think it's fair and right that we participate in some kind of a solution to this issue.
The four years I've been up here, this is the first discussion that we've had as a body about Father Bills and what we could do to help them and the facility and the folks that need the help. So I'm happy to have this discussion. I think it's a discussion that's long overdue, as well as the police and fire stations and having this public safety headquarters. So I'm happy that it was discussed tonight, and I'm looking for more deliberation on this, so, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Go ahead, counsel. Go on, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Evening, Mayor.
Counselor.
First of all, I think it's a great plan. You know, you're proactive once again, you know, especially the officers, the police officers out there, I think have spent way too much time in that architectural gem down there at the corner of C Street, and it's time to move. Also, too, in regards to the fire, firefighters, I know that there was mention of that, that piece of land- piece of land, and I think logistically it lays out perfectly at that corner. One thing I wanted to bring up to my colleagues, public meetings. I held off a little bit on public meetings in regards to the administration, I know making some, some changes in their plans. So just so everyone knows, we will start to have at least some public meetings with the businesses in the area to start off with. I've already talked to a lot of the businesses in the area, and they understand what's going to happen there at Broad Street, so they're, they're well-prepared. Just so everyone knows, there hasn't been any public meetings yet, but we'll commence now that we've seen that the plan has solidified a little bit. So it's all, all positive things. And one other thing that I'd like to request is that it gets put into, along with finance, it gets put into public buildings also, together with finance. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we appreciate Mayor coming out tonight to share this with us. Again, thank you to the, both the Fire Department and the Quincy Police Department for coming out here. The work that you guys and, guys and girls do on a daily basis absolutely does not go unnoticed, and we're very grateful for the, you know, your willingness to serve the community. It's tremendous. So I certainly look forward to having this discussion as the committee meetings ramp up. And again, would encourage my members of the Counsel to, you know, ask any questions or request any information leading up to the Finance Committee meeting. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
With that, Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2019-176, the appropriation for $32 million for the Public Safety Headquarters.
On the motion, Counsel.
A motion to move to finance and public buildings, please.
I think we have public safety on there as well. So a trial referral, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. With that, next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Number three, presentation, Quincy Municipal Fiber.
Counsel Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the past couple of years, you know, we've been talking about promoting the concept of Quincy's fiber network, and I thank my colleagues who supported the resolution we put forward a couple of weeks ago to declare that infrastructure is an essential utility in the city of Quincy, and we're going to continue to move forward on looking at the feasibility to roll out this municipal fiber network in the city. So far, we've had a tremendously positive response from residents around the city in terms of filling out the survey that we've put at www quinseyfiber.com, which we still encourage people to participate. As we go forward with this very public and resident-driven process, we'll be launching the same survey that's going to go out with the city census in January, so you'll have another chance to, to fill that out in person. But today, I'm pleased to introduce and welcome the CEO of Entry Point Networks, Jeff Christensen, who has been behind the scenes with Mr. Walker, the mayor, and myself, setting the stage for this project. We've been trying to understand what's going to go into developing this network in the city, and, and we've been obviously at the point where we're getting feedback through the public process. So today is really to understand a little bit more about how that process is going to roll out over the next coming months, and we've asked Jeff to give an overview of his company and how they interact with the city as we move forward. So Jeff, I'd love to invite you to, to the podium.
Thank you all. Thanks for letting me come. I'm going to present for probably 15 minutes, and then try and leave five minutes for questions. And this is, this material can be technical, and I'm going to try and keep it non-technical and hopefully at a level that's useful. I want to thank Chris Walker and Counsel Kane and the mayor. I reached out to Counsel Kane probably 18 months ago, two years after he had referenced the interest of Municipal Fiber for Quincy, and that started a dialogue which picked up in the last six months, where we've talked about what are other cities doing and what are the possibilities for Quincy? And, and so I'm going to take you through just some ideas related to this for a few minutes here. So fundamental to this is that our economy now is already an information economy, and cities that, cities and individuals that are prepared to participate in an information economy are going to fare much better than cities and individuals who are not prepared. And infrastructure is an important part of that equation. So just as a baseline for setting out, it's important to acknowledge the reality that we already live in an information economy, a communication economy, and it will be increasingly the case that we're dependent on not only the infrastructure, but the skill sets that align with this kind of infrastructure. So there's talk, not just nationally, but globally, about whether broadband is a fourth utility. We've got water, we've got sewer, we've got electricity, and more and more, we're hearing a conversation about whether broadband meets the status of a fourth utility. It doesn't sustain life like water does, but when we frame it in the sense that the economy is an information economy, then this infrastructure is essential, and I think we all understand The problems that we focus on as a company, so we're primarily a software company, we do consulting because, and we, we really are focused in the municipal space, we do consulting because there's a certain set of ideas that we need, we think need to be more broadly considered. This list are the problems that we're focusing on. Democratize access, that means everybody has robust access. Commoditize access means that there's, this is a competitive system, and that's one of the major problems with our current system, is the lack of competition leads to an inflated price structure. So subordinate to that is, is the desire of most people to see more competi, to see real competition in this space. Something that most people don't really think about is that because these large ISPs, you're familiar with the ones that serve your city currently, they control the infrastructure, and that infrastructure, so in the case of a cable company, that's coax, in the case of a telephone company, that's primarily copper, DSL, that by owning that infrastructure, they keep the competition away, but they also keep an innovative threat away. So nobody can innovate around them because they own that infrastructure. We want to align the incentives between the network and the customers. The, the important role of a city or a county is that the interests of the city are aligned with the interests of the customer. You don't have a profit motive. You want robust connectivity, you want abundant bandwidth, you want innovation, you want economic development. All of those things are aligned with what consumers want from the network. And so that alignment is critical to what we think of building the correct network or the ideal network. We want to mitigate risk for the city. We want to deploy state-of-the-art network functionality. Data centers have much more advanced network functionality than today's broadband networks. And so we want to think about the network capabilities that will be more evolvable. And then last, we want to create local resiliency. So we want a network that, today, the internet, you're dependent on that internet staying up. When information leaves Quincy, it goes to downtown Boston or goes to Cambridge. We want to create a network that still enables that, but also creates local resiliency for So currently, I referenced this a minute ago, this group of companies, these main ISPs nationally, control the infrastructure and they control the service. That level of control is total, and it's hard to keep the customer in your lens, in your full focus, when you've got that level of control. And so what, one of the ideas that we advocate is separation of power, breaking up the control over services and infrastructure. And so we view the proper role of cities and counties as to be stewards over the infrastructure, not to compete with the private sector at the service layer, but to be a steward over the infrastructure. That's a role that cities are used to playing and play well. And so when we organize these networks, we organize around that idea. So this represents, you know, this idea of separation between infrastructure and services, that's a philosophical idea, but it also needs to get instantiated in the technology. So the technology needs to make that possible as well. So rule number one for us as we work with cities is that whoever controls the infrastructure has control. And we're interested in moving that control really to the customer, and so the city becomes a steward on behalf of the customer. So what's the difference between the ideas that we're espousing and the way it works today? On the left, we've got the incumbent model. The internet is an open system in that model, but access and infrastructure are both closed systems. And by closed, that means they're keeping out competition, they're keeping out innovation, they control who comes and goes. The model we're espousing is create that separation, and then the internet, access, and infrastructure are open. You may wonder, what does it mean to have open infrastructure? What it means is that you pay for infrastructure independent of services. So if, if a customer pays for their infrastructure into a different bucket than they pay for their ISP, that liberates a bunch of services, and we probably won't have time tonight to explain that fully, but if you pay for your infrastructure and you're not worried about preserving a price point on services, we're opening up the possibility that the cost of services can fall through competition. So we want to create that separation. This metaphor is a metaphor we use consistently. The way the system works today would be analogous to FedEx having their own road and not letting anybody drive on it, and UPS having their own road and not letting anybody drive on it. And the model we want to get to is one road and then open it up to traffic. Fiber optics is the road we're recommending. Fiber optics are 25,000 times more capable, just the fiber itself, 25,000 times. We can do in excess of 25 terabits per second, then cable, coax. Cable, coax is getting more capable gradually, but the physics of it are that fiber is the technology of the future. So I'm going to, I don't know if this will play here. So I'll come back to that at the end. This was an article that was just released two weeks ago in the magazine Fast Company. It was titled, "The City With The Best Fiber Optic Network In America Might Surprise You." And then the article starts out, "You might think it's New York, it's not. You might think it's San Francisco, it's not. It's a small town in Idaho called Ammon, and Ammon is the first network that we built." And Chris, or Counsel Kane can send you the article, but it basically goes through this open access model and advanced networking technologies that make this what Fast Company called the best network in America. So I want to briefly explain the economics. I'm sure that's everybody's question, what does this cost? I was just doing some, looking at that number for the public safety building, I was doing some math on what is leaving this city today and going to your internet service providers. And I calculate that each year, this city is paying, not the city itself, but the residents, doesn't include the businesses, between 30 and 40 million per year going out of Quincy to bring internet into Quincy, 30 to 40 million. So the question is not, can we afford to do this? The money's already there. The question is, how does the money flow? So it's really a, a, creating a new stream that the money's going to flow through. We believe, done right, this model, this open access model can drop prices 30% and increase bandwidth 10x. Okay? That's our goal. Drive bandwidth up 10 times, drop the price 30%. And we have to prove that out through this feasibility process, but that's our goal. So the way this works, we separate the costs into three primary buckets. Infrastructure is the capital cost, and that cost, I'm going to throw out a number of $3,000. If you do it aeroically, it'll probably come in lower, but I'm going to throw out a $3,000 number per premise. If you finance that over 20 years, it ends up being $20 a month. Okay? So infrastructure spread over 20 years is $20 a month. And then maintenance and operations, also close to $20 a month. That's, that doesn't go away. That's an ongoing cost to maintain and operate the network. And then we've got up here an ISP cost of $10, that's for a 1,000 by 1,000 connection. And that gives us a cost of 4,950. We're in the middle, I'll go, I'll show you some of the survey numbers, but this, these are the numbers from Ammon. So Ammon does have the lowest internet costs in the United States, and everybody gets a one gig pipe. So everybody gets 1,000 by 1,000 symmetrical, and they're not sharing with their neighbors, right? Yeah, everybody has their own connection. So once the infrastructure cost gets paid off after that 20-year period, that goes away, and the total cost then drops to just under $30 in this model. That's an important, in, in the incumbent model, what you're under today, everybody is a renter, nobody's an owner, that cost never goes away. You pay infrastructure regardless of what the infrastructure is forever, into perpetuity. In this model, you can pay off your infrastructure and then the cost, that line item drops off. All right, I'm going to skip ahead. In Ammon, we basically cut the cost in half, and we, we went from 30 by 5 connection to 1,000 by 1,000. But that's the impact that we've already had there. So I'm going to, just for the sake of time, I'm going to skip down, I want to just show you how this works on video. Let me go to a different. So this is just a video of how the, how the interaction works, how you pick your ISP. So you come in, you see your ISP choices, you hit subscribe, go through some legal language, and then once you hit this last subscribe button, the network gets built. So you're basically being connected to an ISP in the cloud. And you can go up to your dashboard then and see that you're now connected to an ISP. So it takes about 30 seconds. And then if you want to unsubscribe, this is just showing you that we can get out to the internet. So if you want to unsubscribe, you go in, you hit unsubscribe, verify it, and again, it takes less than 30 seconds to eliminate that connection to the ISP, and you can go out and choose a new one. So the, the key idea. So the key idea here. That all ISPs become software companies, they don't control the infrastructure, and because they're in the cloud, that gives us the ability to build the automation and dynamically switch our ISPs. The real effect, people get choice, which they care about, and that's one of the reasons people resent these big companies, is they feel like they don't have choice, they feel like they're boxed in. But what having choice does is it creates the competition that's necessary to drive the cost down, and we demonstrated that in Ammon. So I'm going to stop there, not go too much deeper, I wanted to see if there are any questions. I wanted to see if there are any questions based on this information that we've covered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation. I want to thank my colleague Counselor Kane for really pushing this agenda item some years ago and really getting you to the table here tonight. The number one big question we have in the city of Quincy that I've been fielding for six years since I've been elected is, we need to have more options than just having Comcast. So does your solution solve that issue of the monopoly of Comcast in our city?
Yeah. Yeah, what you're gonna find, so when we launch this network, I think you'll have, what's happened so far is every ISP that comes into the network, because they're now software companies, they say to us, "We want to go wherever you go." So it doesn't matter if they're in Idaho or Los Angeles or Redding, California. The ISPs say, "As a software company, I can, I can serve somebody in Quincy, Massachusetts." So what you'll find is that you'll probably immediately have five choices, but you may have as many as 10. And some of those will compete more aggressively than others, which will create continuous pressure on price. And if people are dissatisfied, it literally takes them 30 seconds to switch.
Well, competition is good. That's what drives the price down. There's no competition and monopolizes, which is happening here in, well, has happened here in Quincy. It's unfortunate that I continuously hear this bill going up at Comcast. They don't have any options. So that would alleviate that by having other sources.
You would immediately, I think you would have closer to 10 options, but I know for a fact you'll have at least five to start.
How fast can you do this? How, what, what does it take?
I think our planning process, so Counselor Kane talked about feasibility. Feasibility is a function of demand. And so in this model, what we ask the subscriber, the consumer, is to make a commitment to the infrastructure, to think about it like they're sewer and water, right? We're gonna improve your property by putting, connecting you through fiber optic cable to the internet. So just that $20 portion, we're gonna ask them to, to be committed to that. Otherwise, the city's gonna make that commitment. That's the choice. Either the city commits to the infrastructure or the property owner. We think the property owner's the right entity because we know from research that it increases property values by 3.1%. And the internet's not going away. So if they'll commit to that portion, we will in turn give them extreme value by dropping their price significantly and giving them the ability to pay off the infrastructure and doing something like 10x on their speed, on their capacity.
What if technology's faster than you? Like what I, what I mean by that question is people are using fire sticks and all these other options that are available right now at, at Best Buy and stuff. So what if you're pitching this pitch and, let's, let's be honest, are you a salesperson?
Well, we're all salespeople, but.
Okay. Been around a long time. What type of commitment or investment are you looking for? Or what are you pitching for?
So really, it's the infrastructure that's the key piece here. And you have to kind of dig into fiber optics to understand why it's the right infrastructure. So commercially, the infrastructure, I can send you research articles that show that it's, it's capable of 25 terabits. So we go from megabits to gigabits to terabits. And that's a 1,000 increase through each transition. But in a laboratory environment, they're doing between 200 and 300 terabits per second. So, you know, we're, we're down here squabbling over, do I have 50 megabits or 100 megabits? Well, you gotta go up 1,000 to gigabits and then go up another 1,000 to terabits. So your question, the, the right question, and you're asking it, is will something replace fiber? Will 5G replace fiber? Will something else replace fiber? The reality on 5G is that 5G is dependent on fiber. 5G doesn't work without fiber. And so putting this infrastructure in is gonna future-proof the city as far as communications technology goes.
The reason why I ask that question is I, every time the bill on, on a cellphone, there's so many new models that come out continuously. And you know, there's trendsetters out there that want to have the new iPhone, the new version. And there's some people that are in the middle, they'll wait a little bit. And, and there's some people that are on the backlog. They'll just use a very simple, a little bit better than a flip phone. But what I'm trying to say is, is you pitch something and then the next thing you know, we get to the table and there's something else that kind of makes it.
So there's two issues there. One is the base infrastructure, which I'm saying should be fiber. And then in order to use that fiber, we've got to put electronics on both ends of it. So in our model, we assume that we're gonna change those electronics every seven years. So when we cost model, we assume that the switches and the servers that light up that fiber are gonna change every seven years. And that's really what you're getting at. But this fiber should last 50 to 100 years.
50 to 100 years, okay. That's, that's the magic question I'm asking because.
And we don't have to dig it up. I mean, once you get a conduit in the ground, you can pull it out and put a new fiber strand.
The other big issue is, is you taxing somebody else. So you said either tax the residents or tax the city.
Yeah, the key idea is that it's voluntary.
Okay.
We're not gonna.
Voluntary.
We're not gonna mandate it.
Okay.
We're gonna, it's opt-in. We're, we're saying, we're gonna bring you extreme value. In return, we want a commitment on the infrastructure. Treat it like you own it, like your sewer and water connection, but it's voluntary. Nobody's gonna be forced to do this.
I see. That makes it more.
Politable.
Yeah. That, that, there you hit it on the head. Because if you start imposing this on certain residents, I mean, some of them will say, "I'm all set, I'll just buy an antenna and do that away."
People don't want to be backed into a corner. This is opt-in.
Okay, there you go.
So feasibility. Feasibility becomes going out door-to-door, talking to people and saying, "Here's the deal."
I see.
That we're gonna give you value.
I see.
We want you to commit. Nobody's gonna force you to do it and find out what people want.
So we've given them the option of having it?
Yep.
Having this, okay.
Yep.
Makes, makes a lot of sense, okay.
This becomes viable at about 40%. In Ammon, that first, they started out of the gate at 74%. People were, they'd had it with the cable company, 74% initial adoption. As they moved citywide, that's dropped down in the mid 60s. But they still have an enormous take rate comparatively to other solutions nationwide.
Thank, thank you very much for answering those questions and.
Sure.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Others?
Oh, Sac Counselor? Any questions? Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you, Counselor Kane. This has been, this is a very informative presentation that you brought here tonight. So just for some clarification, when we were talking, because I, I just think sometimes when people are at home and they hear this, they're gonna be like, "Oh, you know, this is gonna replace my Comcast." But this is, this really is for smart TVs and anybody who's, doesn't have a smart TV wouldn't be able to utilize this, correct? Just for ground setting. Is that true?
Yeah, so this is, so people think about Comcast and they've got internet connectivity, they've got their television.
Telephone.
Some have voice. And they may be bringing in Netflix and other things. This replaces, well, it doesn't have to replace, people can leave their coax, but it really is the infrastructure that enables all those other things to happen.
I just kind of wanted to ground set that because sometimes when we talk about this, because we, Quincy currently only has one option, Comcast. And when we talk about something like this, immediately we think this is the replacement for Comcast. And it somewhat is, because you could potentially have multiple different things. So if this was something that would be able to come in when you're talking about the infrastructure of the fiber optics and you had a smart TV, you could go directly with Netflix or in all the other options, even Xfinity over the, over, over fiber optics that we currently can't do. But you have to have certain technology to be able to do that. You could do it off your computer because, but you couldn't do it off of maybe an older television. I'm not saying that, you know, I'm sure people at home know that too. I just wanted to just set that groundwork. And then also, we were talking about the pricing, because people will focus in on pricing.
Sure.
And I know what you're saying, that, you know, monthly, monthly infrastructure expense priced over 20 years, but we didn't take into inflation for that, so. So, I mean, in, in reality, $39.50 in 20 years would be close to $58.90, so.
Yeah. I do think we, it depends how much the network is aerial because the cost of aerial is closer to 2,500 instead of 3,000, but valid point on the.
Yeah, I just, I just want to ground set that because when looking at numbers like that, the question be, you know, it's, and these are, and you said it right from the beginning that this is just, we were just roughing out these things and I just, I just wanted to mention that. And then the other question that I had when we're talking about this, so many people will say, you know, "How come Quincy still has telephone poles with wires on it? Why don't we have our, why don't we have everything underground?" And this would not be replacing our telephone, telephone poles and putting everything underground. It would be for the areas that we have underground connectivity, we would be underground and anything that was above these, just like our Comcast wires come through a wire right now. And if the wire goes down, you lose all connect, you lose connection. Same thing would happen in this particular case, that if it was, it would be another wire that's on our telephone poles connecting into our homes potentially, correct?
Yeah, we.
Am I wrong about that? I just wanna, I just want to make sure I understand that.
We had a conversation this morning. I mean, one of the issues is, are there parts of the city that are granite or other rock ledge that's difficult to bore in? We can't underground this whole system. Ammon did. The price would probably be closer to 3,500 per premise if we undergrounded the whole thing. And we can, we can look at that in our analysis.
Yeah.
It's faster and easier to put it on the poles.
Yeah.
But then when you get an ice storm or heavy snow, you.
And then out of curiosity, if that was to be the case, this is just a value engineering question and we're not there yet.
Yep.
At all, I don't believe. But if the wire was to go down, who's responsible for the wire going down?
Right, so we, in the pricing, we had a $20, we're, we'll model to $20 per subscriber per month. So if we got the whole city, it'd be something like 35,000 subscribers times $20 per month. That gives you your budget. And so that'll either be a, a new city department, a fiber department, or you would outsource to a third party to manage and operate the network.
Okay. And then this is just a sensitivity question for, for me. So one of the places that the city residents get a lot of their information through the city is through our own cable access company. If you're using smart TVs and you're, you're, currently they're funded by Comcast. So just out of curiosity, just wondering, what's the impact on something like that? I figured it was, I was, and Ian didn't, and Ian didn't prompt me to ask that question. Just want to make sure. But I know, I know it's something that he's, he would be concerned about as well.
Sure.
Sure, you have an answer for it.
So I talked earlier about advanced networking capabilities. So what we're espousing is different than what the other consultants out there are espousing. It's different in three ways. One, we're strongly open access. And what that means is multiple service providers. So people just face validity. You ask somebody, "Do you want one choice or do you want many choices?" If it's something that's important to a person, they're gonna say, "Give me many choices." Just, everybody will do that. So open access in our minds is better than one option.
Absolutely.
Second is software-defined networking. That's where the industry has evolved. So in the data center, we have software-controlled networks as opposed to hardware-controlled networks. And the way you should translate that is automation. Software allows us to automate the network. And that means make, if there's a problem, the network is self-healing or it's alarming, it's notifying of a problem. So software-defined networking allows us to automate things that, that humans would otherwise do. That's the second. The third is network virtualization, and that's what's on this slide. So all networks virtualization means is that with software, we're creating many networks across a single physical media, which is fiber. So we have one fiber strand and with software, we can create multiple software networks. So we can create a network for local access, for the high school football game, the high school play. This meeting could be over one of these networks, just a dedicated, not over the internet, dedicated network. We can create telemedicine networks. We can create public safety networks. We can create a Netflix network. And we're doing this in software and we can do it on demand. So if somebody, so if you wanted to connect from your office to your house, as long as both were in Quincy, you could do that across one of these networks. And these are private networks, which means they're not across the internet. So I didn't necessarily intend to go into the weeds on the technology, but it's an important value add of this kind of network. And this happens all day long in the data center. You know, they used to physically cage off company A from company B. But once they figured out how to do this kind of virtualization, they do everything in software. So they do all their partitioning with software control and software access.
So just, again, out of curiosity, because currently Comcast funds QATV for the staff that works there. So this is when you're talking about that you're able to box it off and be able to apply it in Quincy. So if I'm at my office in Quincy or if I'm at my home in Quincy, I could watch QATV. But if I'm at my office in Boston, I can't watch QATV because, unless I'm using YouTube.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, if it's over the internet, you can. If it's in a private local network.
You can't.
You can't.
So.
Not until Boston adopts this.
Right. So the, so, but my question then goes back to, because Comcast actually funds QATV and this would be a private software that would be using it, so the funding source would be.
Yeah, I mean, really.
I don't know if you have the answer to that. I'm not expecting you to, I'm just trying to.
Really what we're doing is we're giving you the road and we're automating that road. And so the reality is you're today paying 30 to 40 million per year for what you're getting.
And you have a chance to be able to bring it potentially in a different direction and bring that, that savings.
And much more is gonna happen across this network than is currently happening.
Right. Again, I'm just trying to level set because what we're talking about is very conceptual. It's being done.
Yeah.
But in Quincy, it's not. So when we're discussing something like this.
It's a great question.
And it is, it's very exciting and it's, you know, I wouldn't, I don't want to go so far as to say we're well overdue because that would mean that we're doing it tomorrow. Are we doing it tomorrow, Chris? But the, the situation is that we're just starting the conversations of it. And it's, it's something that we do have to find a solution for, I believe. So I think it's, it's a well overdue conversation and I'm glad we're having it. But I also, again, I like to try to level set. Not that I think a million people are watching us. I know my dad is. He's 93, he doesn't have a smart TV, so.
We'll take care of him.
But I don't think he wants it. I have to change it from Spanish to English all the time for them, so. But thank you very much. I think, I just, I just, I just wanted to ask a few of those questions.
That's great.
There are some concerns, but it's also very exciting. And I think there's, there's always ways to work around that. I personally would love to see the fiber optics all underground, but, you know, I'm not sure if that would be cost of, you know.
We can, we can easily make that part of the feasibility so that you can see what do the numbers look like and how does that translate per premise? And then that's a decision the city can make.
I'm sure it's too expensive, but yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Mahoney. Any further questions?
Jack, so basically, and I think you had mentioned it kind of ad hoc in your presentation, how many households are you targeting? Let's see, I should probably know the answer to that question, but I don't.
So the way we do the math is we just divide by three. So if you've got, if you've got 100,000 people in a city, we divide by three and you're gonna end up with 35,000 premises roughly. And so our goal will be to get.
40% uptick?
40% makes it viable. We want to get 50, but 40% would be viable.
So viable in the sense of like you'd have critical mass through the subscriber count where the city really wouldn't be financing it, it would almost be self-financed?
We don't expect the city to finance it in our model. We expect, I mean, the subscriber's gonna pay for this network no matter what. Even if the city did a general obligation bond, you're still gonna, I mean, that's a tax on the residents. No matter what, the citizens are gonna pay for this network. We like to just make that relationship clear and go to them and say, "We're gonna give you a lot of value, we're gonna give you extreme value. In return, we just want you to commit to the infrastructure." You don't have to commit to services, you don't have to commit to MNO. We want you to commit to infrastructure if we bring that infrastructure to your house. Does that make sense?
Say it one more time.
So there's three pieces. Infrastructure, maintenance and operations, services.
I remember the cost breakout, yep.
So the infrastructure we're projecting will be around $20. That's the part we want people to commit to. We're, in return, we're gonna give you tons of value, lower total monthly cost. So what I didn't put up here is the results of the survey. The survey data, and I wouldn't say the survey data is perfect, but the survey data says that people are paying an average of about 105. Now, some of them may have been confused and blended TV in there. The nationwide average is 70 for internet. The nationwide average is 70 for Internet. We think we can get the price to 50. So we're going to drop the price that people are paying, but in return, we want them to treat that as an improvement to their property.
As a utility.
Yeah.
Right.
There's a cost to connect your water, there's a cost to connect your sewer. Now we're saying there's costs to connect.
I just got my water bill this week, so yeah, I'm familiar with it.
The net monthly cost will go down.
The alternatively, you'd mentioned kind of like the grassroots. I know Council Kane has put together a website and, but you'd mentioned, I don't know if it was like, the interpretation was literal, but like knocking on people's doors, are you going to get to that level where you're actually out canvassing?
Yeah, so we will do that under the direction of the city. The way we think about it is not door-to-door sales, but door-to-door education, because everybody has questions.
Yeah.
Some people don't even understand really how the Internet works. So the way we envision that is putting door hangers on people's doors and saying, we're going to be in the neighborhood next week. If you don't want us to knock on your door, just turn the door hanger around and we won't knock on your door. If you would like to learn more, we're going to knock on your door and answer your questions.
Yeah. It's interesting.
These are college kids that will educate and then we'll send them out.
Yeah. And just to kind of delineate what it is and what it is not.
Yeah, it's really to answer questions.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Council Mahoney?
Yeah, of course.
This is my last question. So out of curiosity, you know, where, what other areas have you, have you ever done anything like this in Quincy, in a city like Quincy, or what other areas have you brought this, this to?
So this is relatively new technology. We deployed that first network in Idaho at the end of 2016. It's been an operating live network since September of 2016. But of cities this size, we're right now working with Redding, California, and they're about at the same place in the process, and Redding's almost identical to you in size. We're also working on a project down closer to LA. They're not ready to announce yet, but they're close, and that's a city of 250,000, but they're behind you in the process. So in terms of this size, you and Redding are about at the same place and the same scale.
And then just out of curiosity, just because now we're talking about two different, East Coast, West Coast and weather-wise, I'm just curious because I'm going to go back to the idea of carrying the cables across. I mean, I think you explained it already, that that would be something that would be covered in the expense of putting it up, and if the way, the wires were to go down, is that something that internally the city of Quincy would deal with? Is that what you're suggesting?
We'll outsource the construction most likely. So there's...
No, I understand we'll outsource the construction for putting the cable to either tie underground or above on the telephone poles, but I'm saying if we had a ice storm or a windstorm and you're, like currently, when your Comcast cable goes down, you call Comcast and they come out with their utility truck and they fix your wires, and it's not usually a cost to the homeowner to do that. So if this was something that we, the city of Quincy was to do, and we had a windstorm or an ice storm or something was to happen, who's in charge of those utilities to, I mean, who's in charge of the wire to actually reconnect it to the home? Is it part, it's part of that $20 fee?
It's part of that $20 fee.
And then the determination of however we determine if this is something falls into our, whether it's a city, city department or if it's a contract that we have.
That really gets to why we believe in local networks.
I just, I mean, I just, again, this is just the, I'm way ahead here, not way ahead of my other fellow colleagues, I'm just thinking of how it would work.
Yeah, I mean, all this stuff becomes policy, right? So you're able to set policy, you're able to decide, is the city going to have a fiber department? Are we going to outsource it?
Right.
But it's covered in that $20, and do the math, 35,000 times $20 is a healthy budget.
No, no, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that that was just my, my curiosity, because knowing that if you're talking about doing these things in California, the conditions are different in California than they are here. It's not that you don't have challenges in California, but, you know, we definitely have seasonal challenges.
Yeah, we're actively, so you probably know that once you had your press conference, that Weymouth and now Milton are both interested in seeing if there's some benefit in doing this as a group. It'd still be just the Quincy network, but there may be some economies of scale. We're also working with Wilbraham, and we're also working with Haverhill.
Yeah. It's definitely the direction that, I mean, I think it's a solution that people are looking for, especially since a lot of people now have, you're not saving a lot with your smart TV if you get rid of your Comcast right now.
Yeah.
But you're saving a little, but people are looking for relief and choice.
Yeah.
So this is definitely a well-worthy conversation, so thank you very much.
Thanks to my colleagues for being so receptive and asking such great questions, and thanks to Jeff for the presentation. You know, this is just the beginning. So Jeff travels back pretty frequently to the area because he's working with a number of local areas, cities and towns, and he's said that he's more than welcome to sit with any of us to, you know, answer more questions. And, you know, this will be a very open process, and I still encourage all the residents around the city to participate in the survey at www quinseyfiber.com. And also, you might notice that there is a heat map that is on the Interested page or Show Us Your Interest, and that allows us to see where there are hotbeds of interest in certain parts of the city, and that's probably how this project will roll out based on geographical receptivity to this project. And, you know, so we'll learn more about that soon. So that's about all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Thanks again, Jeff. Appreciate you coming up here and spending some time and, you know, sharing all this presentation. Next, next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2019-177, a gift for...
Motion made by Council Kane to weigh the reading on the motion.
And please send thank you notes.
Motion made by Council Kane, second by Council DeBona. Madam Clerk, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona, Council Harris, Council Mahoney, Council McCarthy, President Crowe.
Yes.
Six members.
Six members. A gift is received. Approval of previous meeting minutes from October 21st, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk.
I do have two communications tonight with the utilities, two grants of locations for Public Works and Advertising, Mass Electric and Emerald Street, and National Grid Gas for Felton Road.
Excellent. Let's go to Public Works and Advertise. All right. Any unfinished business in preceding meetings? Seeing none. Any reports of committees? Council Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have the exact date, but last month, the Finance Committee held a session to discuss Council of 2019-153, an appropriation for $3.5 million in capital improvement plan for C Walls and supplement of funding in accordance with bid. Move for positive approval.
Motion made by Council Kane, second by Council McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Liang. Council Mahoney. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
President Crowe.
Yes.
Six members.
Six members. Y'all Saad Councilor?
That is all.
Excellent. Any other reports of committees? Seeing none. We got presentations of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. Council McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple here, a couple of sad ones. Just want to remember Stevie Dougherty, who recently passed away. Steve was the brother of Parks Department employee Paul Dougherty and worked in the election department as a registrar for the Quincy Board of Registarians overseeing many elections here in the city. And I just want to make sure everybody keeps that family in your thoughts and prayers. The entire Dougherty family is very community-connected and it's just a shame, too young, too young to go. And just remember the Doughertys in your prayers. The other one is another, another very sad departure of Tommy Timko, Hausneck, gentleman who lived down there for, lived in Quincy for 51 years, but the Timkos lived in the Neck. They have a big family and very, very community involved in the Hausneck Community Council and Blessed Sacrament. He's a brother to Quincy Veteran Services employee, Maryam McCormick, 50-year member of the Post 380 Sons of the American Legion, serving as National Vice Commander and Past Commander and held many other positions within the Massachusetts Detachment. As I said, he's very active Hausneck Community and very active with the Holy Trinity Parish. So just keep your prayers and thoughts for the Timko and McCormick families. The visiting hours for Tom tomorrow night, actually Thursday night, excuse me, 3 to 7, and the funeral's Friday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Any other presentations of petitions, memorials, remonstrance, motions, orders, resolutions? Seeing none. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings, you'll see in the backside of this